Hello.
Hi.
We need a couple more chairs.
Come on in. We have a couple more chairs right here. All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Let's have the salute to the flag.
The flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Trusty Trombley.
Here.
Trusty Walensky. Trusty Trombley.
Here.
Trusty Garrett.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Mayor McFatrich.
Thank you.
Where are you going?
Very good.
Uh, may I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting?
Some more.
Any second?
Second.
Any corrections? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. I see we have several people here tonight, that's really great, I love to see people at our meetings. I guess, I don't know if you want to go in a particular order, just state your name. John, you want to go first?
Yes, I can do so I can get to the other thing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you Mayor McFatrich, John Fillion, Fire Chief, in Champlain Fire District. I'm here tonight to, um, basically make a statement about the open burning rules within the village. And sort of make sure that we're clear on what the fire department's feelings are on this. And I believe, um, Mr. K Troille will be speaking more to this a little later from his perspective as a code enforcement officer. To bring everybody up to speed, Chris Trombley, or one of our assistant chiefs, and I met with Mayor McFatrich a couple of weeks ago to discuss a few calls that we've had within the village. Basically, people not respecting the privileges that this board has given them. Fires that are a little too big, uh, fires that are involving garbage, carpets, things like that. And, um, we had a, a very good discussion about it. We talked about, the fire department stance, obviously, on anything like this would be a preference towards the no open burning. That makes our jobs easier, that makes it a lot clearer for what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. The, um, the contained burn pits definitely make our jobs a lot easier. So, we approached Mayor McFatrich with, you know, that proposal, can we go back to that? The discussion we had was that this is a privilege for the community, and for the most part, the community is respecting that privilege. So, where we ended up in the meeting is we talked about a compromise where somehow the board, code enforcement, whatever agency having jurisdictions can help with the enforcement of the rules. The fire department is definitely willing to, you know, make some compromise. The concerns that we have are, number one, we are not an enforcement agency. So when we get called at two o'clock in the morning because somebody's burning garbage in their backyard, there's nothing we can do from a legal perspective. Obviously, we can put the fire out if it's a safety issue, we can, you know, deal with the emergency concerns, but we have to call Mike, we have to call the state police. And in some of these instances, when we get law enforcement involved, things can escalate, tempers can flare, and it can just get out of hand fairly easily. So, the general statement that I'm making on behalf of the fire department, and this is the result of a discussion with most of the officers within the fire department, is that, again, we are willing to work with you guys on the compromises. We do definitely need some help with enforcement if you are going to continue to allow the open burning. But our preference definitely would be if we can go back to the enclosed burn pits. And we are absolutely aware that most of the community is being responsible. So, that's our stand on it, and, um, if anybody's got any questions for me before I leave, I have to get to our business meeting at seven o'clock, but I'm open for any questions.
John, could you just clarify what you mean by going back to enclosed pits?
So, the way I understand, the burning rules within the village historically have been that no open burning, in other words, it would have to be in a chimne type enclosure, or, uh, the small pits that have got the grain over them or something like that. But with the lifting of the burn ban, with the specifics of the size of what a campfire needs to be, and how far away from the house it needs to be, that you guys have allowed over the last four years, I believe you told me?
Yeah, but, but prior, we had no burning.
Right.
Not in chimeneas or any...
Okay.
And we went from that to having rules for campfires.
Okay.
Right, and I thought we did specify size.
We do have that.
Size, type of wood, um, egress from property buildings, et cetera.
And our concern is definitely not with your rules. I've, we've all reviewed the rules and they are very, very appropriate. And if every member of the community were to respect those rules, we wouldn't be having this conversation. The problem comes in with fires that are too big, and fires that are not appropriate materials. Uh, one incident, I don't want to go into the locations and names or anything, but we had an incident where the flames were actually above the gentleman's roof. And by the time we got there, somehow the fire magically settled down to a manageable point. And while we were on scene, everything was legal except he was too close to the house. We informed him of how far he needed to be away from the house. And a neighbor later on that evening sent me a text with a picture of the flames back above the roof of the house.
It's also fifteen feet or so from a fuel oil tank.
Yes. So again, it's, it's nothing to do with your rules, it's nothing to do with the responsible people, it's these irresponsible acts that we're extremely concerned about.
So, John, in these instances, are the state troopers being called and are these people being ticketed because they should be?
We, for the most part this year, have avoided the legal aspect of it. Um, I believe you addressed a couple of...
State police won't issue tickets for that because it's a local law in the village. They'll come, if there's alcohol involved or tempers, they'll take care of that part. But as far as issuing tickets, it, it rare if it ever happens.
They did make them put the fire out one time.
They'll, they'll try to do that, but as far as taking anybody to court, that's not going to happen.
So I guess to, to circle around to your question, um, um, I guess I misunderstood. I thought there was a period of time where the chimneys were allowed. So, I guess that's kind of in compromised world that, you know, we're willing to talk about. Because if, at least if it's in a contained area, there's only so big that it can get. You're not counting on somebody to be monitoring the size of the fire or...
But if you go to that, how, how is that going to be enforced too? If the police won't respond, if they're, they're burning it, what's that going to change? This is the million dollar question, right?
Okay. Mike, this question's for you then. So if the state police won't respond, can you as code enforcement, because it is a village law?
Yes, it's a village ordinance. I get paid at four o'clock. I'm, I'm not on call twenty-four hours a day to go and settle disputes amongst people having a few beers and throwing a plastic cup in a fire pit. I mean, Mr. Fillion's been very, very nice here. When I get my chance to speak, I'm not going to be as nice with this. Because I do not believe that we should be having open fires in the village. People have windows that are open, you never know which way the smoke is going to go, and you have that issue. So, you could be burning a perfectly legal fire, but the smoke is going the wrong way in somebody's window, and then I get a phone call. So, at two o'clock in the morning, that's not fun. Plus the fire department, they, they've got to roll equipment out here. Half a million dollars worth of equipment to go settle a, a damn dispute over a fire. So, I, I am not in favor of open burning in the village, the houses are too close.
And, okay, so if that was revoked, if we revoked this ordinance, would it, would it omit all burning, or did we have this before? Because I thought we did.
We had a few instances of people burning and we would address it. And for the most part, it wasn't an ongoing thing every weekend or every night, night, you know, the nights were out there. I mean, I'm not going to say people aren't going to burn, because you, you go there, "Oh, I didn't know." How many times have you heard that?
Well, I know, that's, that's kind of why we tried to make this...
I mean, there, there's a burn pit here right in approximately this building, it's ten foot in diameter, it's full of aerosol cans and plastic, and you go talk to them, "Oh, I didn't know we couldn't burn that." I mean, you're living in the village, so...
They did know.
Yeah.
They were told.
Yeah.
And they were pulling garbage out of their shed, and they were burning it on the fire. The flames were hitting the second story of the house next door. That's how high they were. They were about ten feet, the fire was about ten feet from the house, about twenty feet, fifteen, twenty feet from the fuel oil tank. And next to two pine trees who were dead with all dead needles in the middle, which goes over at the top of my shed. We asked that they would just calm the fire down. I don't mind anybody having an open fire. But in this situation, people who don't even come from this village, and I just paid a large amount to have pavers put in and an appropriate burning, you know, pit. And you're going to tell me I can't burn now because a couple of wahoos come from some other place and start burning like maniacs who respect nobody else around them? And this, this goes on with the drinking from the morning until the night, and they're... I can't tell you, you know what I would love to see?
What's that?
And, and I think this has all gone downhill since we've stopped it? Put our village police back. And I think that's going to solve a lot of trouble with the problems we're having in the cemetery with the four-wheelers, with the kids that are jumping out in front of cars and throwing things at cars, throwing things at houses that are going around driving unlicensed vehicles across people's properties, who are driving four-wheelers across people's property, and then revving them, popping wheelies when you're trying to make them stop, and then shooting at you? You have an eighty-eight-year-old man in that cemetery that's working over there that these kids have been taunting for three years. And, and you go and talk with the parents and, "Oh, they gotta have a place to play, they gotta have a place to go." And they own fields and fields. And you wonder why people get upset. You call the police, can't do anything, we gotta catch them. We've called the village, you people, your hands are tied. You know, I know you're trying your best, but it is very frustrating when you're the home. We went two weeks, there was two weeks where we couldn't even sleep at night. Because you didn't know what was going to happen next. Between the drinking, the fighting with neighbors, the, the kids tearing around, and the four-wheelers. It's been like a soup. And I hate to, to complain, I love kids, I want the kids to be happy and to have things to do. But I have neighbors who have little children who don't bring their kids to the playground because it's overtaken by kids that aren't behaving, and that scare the little ones, and the little ones can't go. And that really are the ones, and, and the big ones who are in there destroying it. Got busted basketball ba- hoops, and you put all kinds of money in there to help these kids and give them something to do, and they turn around and they destroy it. We need police in this village who are going to make parents and kids responsible and to have some respect. And I'm probably going to be the witch, and then my house is next to be burned down. But, you know, it's got to be said. It has to be said and something has to be done. And I don't think punishing everybody in the village for a few that are moving here and renting or whatever and live here for a few months and then leave terrorize the rest of the village.
Thanks Diane.
So this is a rental situation?
Oh yeah.
So what about the landlord?
Well, I watched a fight go on for two hours the other day, and, uh, uh, what was coming out of everyone's mouth, it's not going to get taken care of because I don't think they're capable of taking care of them. Uh, they try, but there's just no respect there, and everybody's just fighting, and it gets ugly, and it gets awful. Things said and done and...
So John, I know you have to leave. We would definitely, we'll be discussing the issue of fire pits, and it sounds like Mike's going to add more to it. And you and Chris and I talked about it a little as well, which I can explain at some point.
And again, the, the fire department is here to support whatever decisions are made, and, and it's... Our, our primary purpose is to protect life and property in that order, and, and we just know that something has to be done with the irresponsible residents.
Yeah, that's right.
Because we don't want to see somebody lose their house, we don't want to see somebody get hurt without further worse. And as Mike said, when we get a call, it usually comes in as an unknown type fire, because people just see the flames and the smoke. So, by standard, we have to treat that as a possible structural fire until we know otherwise. So we're responding two to three trucks, five to ten firefighters at least. And, you know, you're, by the time we get a full response out, if we don't know that it's a campfire that's a little too big, you could have actually a million dollars worth of equipment on the road.
Right.
And eight to ten people taking chances and being in a hazardous situation. So, you know, we, again, whenever this board decides, whenever you work out, we will support it, and we will help in any way we can, but we absolutely need some help with enforcement.
Thank you, thanks for taking the time and explaining that to us. Really appreciate it.
All set?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks John.
Thank you, Lord.
Diane, do you have any, anything you want to add?
Well, I can tell you a lot of things. I mean, my husband is affiliated with the cemetery of Glenwood. They, they're, all the fencing is down, they're driving through. We heard them up there, we went up one time. When we went up, we could see the dust where they had just driven in, but we couldn't hear, everything had stopped. Well, they apparently were parked up on the, the higher part, and they could see down. We went in, and we noticed where they were driving in and out of the field, one of the spots, there's many spots where they come in and out. And we stopped, and my husband was just looking around. As we were looking around, all of a sudden, we heard them start gunning. And they were down by the bridge. And they took off from, at the bottom of the bridge, and they drove up to the top. And my foolish husband runs out where the road turns and is waving at them to stop. They stopped dead in front of them, and they just revved it and just stared at them. And then all of a sudden, they just popped that wheelie and they took off. And as they turned, and, you know, of course, the rocks were flying, the gravel. They have done the same thing, they came in, they came over the top, the center part where the flag is.
Yeah.
They stopped at the top of the hill. Mr. Menard was working, he was down by the shed. And he just stopped, and he looked at them, and he's telling them, "No," like this. And they, they stood up on it and they gunned it. They did wheelies on the side where they've torn up the turf. Then they've done that in other parts of the cemetery, and came down and just swished around them, taunting. And then zoomed out. They've broken the railing off the bridge. They've torn up turf in all different places, they've gone. And the fence needs to be fixed around there. That, that is, and they're trying to get a meeting going, but you've got to give two weeks' notice so if anybody wants to come to the meeting. And, and I wish they would. And there should be many more who I know have had problems that aren't here tonight besides me, but, um, but they've, they've, uh, took the, the railing, they threw it in the river, or the brook, or creek, whatever. They had to fish that out. And then I believe, well, I don't know if it was Alan Racine or someone, came up and screwed it back on once again. They took huge boulders that are around the pond and rolled them, and threw them in where the dam and the valve is, which has just been refixed, and threw it down on top of there. Now whether they've damaged it, Mayor, Mr. Maynard hasn't been able to get down there, and we've, they're waiting to get the meeting so they can do all this checking and whatever.
So if we know who these people are, why are the police doing nothing?
Because you have to catch them in the act.
But you're seeing it, and you're reporting it.
Otherwise it's hearsay.
Doesn't matter.
It's just, you, you have to have proof. And then, and Mr. Maynard has talked with the mother, Barb Southwick, just had them driving right across her property and taunting her yesterday. She went and spoke with the mother, and the mother said, "Well, they gotta have a place to play."
Yeah, and we put up a sign on our land.
Yeah, and they were on your land. And I mean, it's just, it, at night, I had a, we had a neighbor that was driving up Stones Hill. That's kids, that threw something, hit her car. And like she said, I couldn't very well stop in the middle of a curve on a hill. There's another night where they were jumping out in front of the cars in the dark from in front of the park, and then they have their cameras and they're recording it, I guess for ridiculousness, I don't know. I don't know what they're doing or what they're thinking. One of these kids are going to get killed. Someone is not going to see them, and they're going to jump out at the wrong time. They were on Church Street, and they were standing, I guess, this I heard, in the middle of the road, and wouldn't move, the cars had to drive around them. Now this is in the middle of the night. We had the night they threw off, our neighbor that came by and they threw, it was garbage, night, the, the next day, they were picking up the garbage, everyone had their garbage pails out. They must have dug this out of a garbage pail. It was a Ziploc bag with a very big piece of pork loin. And there was six, like five or six kids. And all of a sudden, I heard this cracking, you know, it sounded like someone hitting a vehicle. And we went running out, and these two boys went running by. And of course, again, my husband jumps in the car and following them, whatever. We, I went and immediately called the police. And the police came, he'd stopped, four of them, and was talking with them. And what they were, one young lady, I call her a young lady, tongue in cheek, the things coming out of her mouth and the way she was talking to my husband was unbelievable. And she decided she was going to call her father, and he encouraged her to call her father. And he did come, he did come. And he tried to get, he got all of kids in the car, but she kept yakking and kept yakking. The, uh, police talked to them, police talked to the father, and he just looked at me and goes, "I..." She turned fourteen or fifteen, and I just can't control her, I can't do anything with her. And, you know, I, I said, "She's fourteen years old and she's hanging out on the streets at ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night."
Or three AM.
Three AM, four AM, four thirty. There, and they're, I've seen nine or ten of them walk out of my, a house adjacent from my property. In the middle of the night.
This is why we'll get that curfew, we need that curfew law.
And, you know, I, they, I came back from going on vacation with my sister, I pull in the yard, and here's these boys screaming at my husband, my husband's trying to talk to them, the mother is screaming at the kid, the kid is screaming at the mother. I finally went over, got my husband away because he, he's not well, I just, I knew he was shot. Come to find out, they've had an unlicensed vehicle, they had been going around our street.
Our street.
His wife had told them to slow down, they did this three times. On the fourth time, he came across, now mind you, my husband was on the play, on our yard where our swing set is with my grandson. He brought him in to go to the bathroom, and he was walking him back out. And the car came around, and instead of making the curve, he drove right across our property between the boat and the swing set, and right over to the, to the house. The mother's telling him to be quiet while Andy is talking to him, and he's telling her. And it went back and forth and back forth, she turned around, she shook her head, and she walked into the house and walked away. So that's what was done. And it, you know, it's just been all summer, all summer. I have to admit, this last week's been wonderful, I don't know what's happened. I, I hope it's not the calm before the storm. But this is what's been going on, and up at our end, it's been bad. Got drinking going on, people passing out on their steps. Sitting there for four hours, didn't think they were going to revive them, we were ready to call 911. Finally, they got them revived, then they jump in the car, and it's, and you know, they come back and they got another twelve-pack, and they're starting all over again.
Okay. Well, thank you for sharing all that. You know, it's been very difficult. And you know, we, you know, we are working on some things.
I know you are, I know you are, but I beg you, please, bring back our village police.
We'll talk about every option that we have.
At least we've got someone right in the town, and, and, or the village, and they, they build a rapport with the kids too. When I think of what Ross's point had, and then they respected him, and he worked with them, and he helped a lot of kids. And these kids need that.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to fight with these kids, nobody wants to abuse them, but we want them to respect us too, right?
Well, certainly, should have respect. So we have a couple of other, did, did you have a comment?
I have a comment just to say some, new in town.
A neighbor, and we've had people walking around our, that was one I forgot. They were going around our property and then walked right up close and was looking into his house. He wasn't there.
Oh, okay.
Looking into the window, and doing it more or less to taunt, to say, "I can do this."
Well, we do take it very, very seriously, and we will do everything we can. Mr. Coe, do you have anything to add?
I'm here to back up Diane.
I know you are, but I thought if you have anything to add...
No, I did, nothing affected me personally, but, uh, I was aware of everything that went on, you know.
Of the shooting off of the cherry bombs too.
The fires, the fires are unreal. I mean, you, you look over there behind that house, and it looks like the whole backyard, and it's, you know, it's thirty feet in the air. Terrible, I, yeah. I said to the wife, I thought, I thought we had a no burning thing, you know, it must be they don't, they don't care. Because if people don't care at all, they just won't burn anywhere.
All right. Um, we have a couple of other presenters which we could, we could do at this time as well, and move you up so these two groups could leave. Everyone else is willing to stay, if you'd like to stay for the meeting. Um, or if you, maybe if you want to.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Diane.
Watch my house.
Okay, I'm going to leave too.
Diane, thank you.
I just came by, back her up, so...
Thanks, Dan.
See you later.
Okay, bye, Richard. Bye, Richard. Thanks for coming. Would Solar Farms like to go ahead and, okay, tell us, uh, tell us about your program?
Yeah, we are actually Solar Farms, um, last year they bought the Delaware River Project, both treated the Ford River Project down on the Ashline Farm, um, to be a solar community project. Basically, all the program does is it offers people five percent off their NISIC. It's not an ESCO, it's not anything that changes their rates. Does change the billing a little bit because it kind of breaks it up to where the, um, the entered, the electric supply and delivery is actually credited, and solar credits on the NISIC bill. And then they take five percent off of that. But the NISIC bill, their rates, everything is, is still controlled by NISIC, if they have ESCOs or ad credits, all that stuff still stays the same. They're just crediting it and kind of taking a chunk off of it just to provide cheaper electric to the communities. It's, um, it's hooking into the grid. This is my daughter, and we're from up in Allen Berwick, so we're in the middle of a lot of projects, and they see a lot of energy going out, not a whole lot gets to stay here in our grid. This one is hooking in, and it is staying, supporting our electric, our, you know... our grid. This one is hooking in and is staying, supporting our electric, our, you know, our electric grid. They do also have clean energy partners, which we've been setting up in each of the towns. I did contact the fire department and that's out here. We've set up clean energy partners departments in so far in Beaventown, Moore's, Ellen Burke Depot, Ellen Burke Center and Altona. We have clean energy partners with the senior housing. It's mainly for nonprofits. Between my daughter and I, we've been able to bring in over five thousand dollars in the last month and a half to our local town organizations. I don't want to forget the Moore's Library. I always forget that one. That one is also a clean energy partner. But that's, that's basically what we're doing. And it's a door to door thing so we can explain to people how clean new solar projects work. Give them information and kind of direct them to the New York website where they top that New York's own legislation so that they can better understand what these community projects are going up throughout the state and what they're meant to do, which is to, if you're not familiar with New York's own legislation, is to provide all of New York's own power for New York by New York within a certain time, for this like the next two decades. But that's gonna take some time. You know, that farm over there is meant to support like three hundred and fifty homes. But for the North Country, that's, that's covers a good area. But when you're talking about south of Albany, that's a lot more energy that needs to be supplied. So they do need support from New Yorkers for these community projects throughout the state in order for the program to take off and be successful over the next couple of decades. And we're just, we're just part of that. That's all. Because we're kind of just like walking through months. I believe I left it, I think I left one so that you guys can see there that we are. No, there's no hitches anywhere. It's nothing anybody's gonna get charged down the road with a surprise fee or a, it's just a month by month. If you wanna be in, you're in. If you're not, you don't wanna be heat up, that's fine. And that's, that's all it is. Do you guys have questions for us?
Are you affiliated at all with this other solar farm that's going in locally or totally separate?
Yes, as far as I know, I don't think. Are you the other solar guy?
I'm not.
Oh. No, actually, we were kind of hoping to get some information on what's coming, cause people do ask us. And like I said, we're from Allenburg, so I, I'm a biologist by nature, so I like to know what's coming into our area and how things are being affected, how things are being maintained, how. I, I just said, I come from a long line of people that kind of fight everything coming in just to, not by, not by bad nature, but just to kind of. My grandmother was Elsie Hart. I grew up protest marching against metal boys in Cincinnati years and years ago with the Drowns trying to come in. And so that's, that's kind of been my whole life and now she's kind of been raised the same way. So we actually started with them by calling them. I was worried about them using Roundup. Because we all have well water. Well, I don't know about you guys out here, but that way we all, none of us having a school water. So our wells, keeping our wells clean is pretty important to me, but they don't, they don't use Roundup. So that wasn't a worry.
Any other questions?
So working with NISAC in this rate increase they're trying to get put through, how is this going to affect everything with you?
Um, it's, it's what, no matter what NISAC's charging or ESCOs are charging, it's still five percent off of whatever you're getting charged by this.
Still giving NISAC business.
Um, and according from, from what I read with this proposed, uh, because it was in last Thursday's paper, I believe, right? It's mainly for, they're proposing that much of a jump because of maintaining around the lines basically, right? Tree brush cutting and
That's a good sell.
Huge.
Huge.
I don't pay Ross's point electric. This was built in eighteen ninety. When I see that, I'm like, are you kidding me? So yeah, no, this is, it'll still chump five percent off of that. And originally it was just supposed to be, when I started the program in the end of May, working with them, it was only open to residences. But as we've gotten community support, we've signed up over two hundred homes between the two of us. So as we get more community support, they've allowed us to open it up to farms and small businesses. So and those, our farmers really benefit from it more, cause five percent off of the farming electric bill is pay something else. Fluctuating milk prices, any little bit that helps, you know, so, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you mind if we stay so we can learn on the other solar project as well?
Yeah, you can, of course you can stay.
Yeah, we're in Doug, we're discussing it, don't worry.
No, but we've got, and Carrie was talking about Good Energy.
Yeah, I'm talking about the energy choice education.
It's a, yeah, it's, it's not a solar project. It's an aggregation, but we certainly welcome the state.
No, the only reason I was asking is because there's a farm being, a solar farm being put in here. I didn't know if that was all the same company or not, if we're two separate.
That's dedicated for Orda. You can't put that in the other on that park because of their rules and regulations. So they made arrangements for, to have it down here, but that power is assigned for Orda.
Interesting.
Yeah, I, I thought they should have put it up there.
The one on two seventy-six?
Yeah.
Robinson?
I'll say it's just sort of a.
No, it's not.
I have a question. That's five percent credit. That's only on your usage.
That's on the, um, that's
Your use of on funding is correct.
On the delivery charge and supply charge, both of those categories. And the credit covers.
And supply.
Yes. Except for on demand. NISAC has a specific on demand charge for commercial. Um, and originally when we started the program, it was supposed to be able to be covered. And then about two weeks ago, when they started all the grid hookup process and whatnot, when they finalized their agreement, they, they no longer allowed us to credit that on demand credit. Cause NISAC, that's their fee for commercials. So we can't cover that if it's a specific on demand. But as far as residential, all of the electric supply and delivery, yes, is credited.
All right. Well, I told Ed I would let him go early so that he doesn't have to stay around for the whole meeting.
Very active meeting.
Yes, it is.
Thank you for inviting me up and trustees and citizens. Okay, a little bit of background to why in, where our company is trying to achieve. And basically my background, I do it exactly with you. I went and followed my, my father and his grandfather. I'm probably the fourth or maybe I think the fifth generation and gone in the, the energy sector. Literally like my great, great grandfather, Rochelle in the late eighteen hundreds and grandpa, they started a big company and my dad's son is very active in the energy business and I went that route. And during my career, I went with my family and then from there I got, I started to do a set of purchasing for the city of New York. So I got, I worked for Mayor Giuliani that I got appointed by Bloomberg, doing an energy person for the city. And during that time period, my biggest supplier was Hess, a big retail gas station. So I worked for Amorada Hess for several years and then joined into a company called Good Energy about fourteen years ago. And we're a national company. We're, we have five offices. We're in Boston, headquarters in New York City, Peterborough, Illinois, Dallas, and LA. And we cover large real estate. If it's big hospitality, if it's Hilton, Sheridan, we have them, Jones, I'm in the South, Titus Fire, very, very large, uh, real estate in all the big major cities across the United States. Probably about ten years ago, while we were, this is like a, the transformation of the company, about, probably about, I'd say seventy-five percent of it was large real estate and twenty-five percent government. But we went out to, it's first really started in New Jersey where we picked up Edison, New Jersey, then Atlantic City, then Trenton. We started doing all of their energy management. And it just started to really blossom in the state of New Jersey. Then we got a call out in Illinois where we started doing large aggregations there. And so the, we were here last, like the, the village is on a contract of some sort, correct? Yeah, so like, so what you're doing here is, you know, you're, you're getting all your assets together. If it's maybe hopefully a board of education or your jail or community college or wherever, you're getting it all together, doing Costco theory, buy in bulk, get a discount. You can get that. And, and that's what we do with large real estate and that's what we do with governments. We went out in the state of Illinois and we picked up about three hundred municipalities there. Pretty sizable load within the state. But that's where we got introduced to a, a program called Community Choice Aggregation, CCA. And that is identical to what you guys are doing. You know, you're getting all your assets together and you're getting a, you know, you see the Costco there. But here it's what you're doing for your residents. The residents are all coming together as one and they're going out just like you are, just like, just like a professional business would do. They're going out and they're doing a large purchase for the residents. But the difference is, is when you go out, when you get a contract, the representatives come back to you and there's terms associated there. Twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six months, wherever they find that you're comfortable with and they feel comfortable with, and then you strike a deal, there's terms. I don't have a contract. So there, there is no contract with, with the CCA. So this is a usually endorsed program, but I don't have a contract. So the residents are basically, like right now, they have, they have one option. It's the utility. Maybe some solar blend in there as well. And they, they have that option to sort of control some of the rates. As we all know, New York State is a underrated state, so the rates go up and down. January, you get a big bill. August, you get a big bill. It goes up and down all over the place. This auction is actually pretty low. But what we're doing here is we're gonna come back and all we're doing here is you're just trying to collect information. What we've done in other townships in Clinton County is we're asking you to pass a local law. And then, then once we get the local law, we can go to the utility, collect the data, and then give you a proposal. So does this work? Does this work? I don't know. I'm pretty sure it does work. I've been doing this for a long time. We've already done other municipalities within this area and it has been successful. So we would like to come back to you with a proposal and, and do it. If you were gonna do a, like a traditional bid for the township, you can put that together in ten days. You get twenty bids. It's, it's pretty simple. A CCA program takes about four to five months to get off the ground. It's a slow moving process. The process is you pass the local law, we collect the data, we then come back and we see that we, we didn't go out in different terms to see where we think there's a sweet spot. And then we move forward and then the, I, I'm heavily regulated by the Public Service Commission. We have, there's a sixty day public reading. So we have to have, I don't know what your charter is, but if it's one or two public readings, we have to do that. We have to, every single resident will receive of some sort a palm cord in, in, in the mail about this. I understand a lot of people don't read their, their utility bill. I don't. So but we're still gonna be sending that. We will advertise on your local municipal, municipal website. We have an in-house marketing team that would redesign that. We then, we have an eight hundred, we have two call centers, one in Texas, one in New York. We have, we're gonna put on, on that website, there's about fifty to sixty FAQ questions that every single person that I've been asked around the state has been, been asked. So that's a little bit of the, just going back to where we sort of discovered this. When we were in Illinois, we, we heard of CCA. And during that time period, that fifteen percent of the state was buying their power in, in that capacity. Today, ninety-seven percent of the state of Illinois buys their, the residents buy their energy in this type of capacity. So about several hundred million dollars in savings came, came dumping into Illinois. And that put up a big light in, back about five years ago, Audrey Zippelman was the Chair of the Public Service Commission for the state of New York. She said, I like that. I want that to come to New York. And we didn't seek her out. She saw us out. And we sort of just told her everything and what was going on. It started in California, to it, in Illinois, Ohio. Now, New York State is the seventh state to have adopted this new program. And so we brought it into the state and we were the, the lead advisor for Westchester County. So currently, right now, White Plains, Norishell, they're all doing this. So about, probably about fifteen million dollars went into, in savings went into, into Westchester County. They loved it. Dutch is right above them and said, we want that. Cuomo said, you gotta hold up. This is a pilot program. Rockland said, this is crazy. We're all New York State residents. We want this. We want this now. And so they really went to Albany and they really petitioned on, on our part. And now the statewide order came up about a, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, and now everyone can do this. So I've been sort of working in the, uh, the Clinton County area and we've met with the, with Plattsburgh. They're moving forward. They've already done their paperwork. Chazy, they're, they're moving forward. Their action, their, their, their energy is flowing. Beavent, I'm gonna be speaking up there next week. We are the exclusive regarding energy for, it's a, the New York Conference of Mayors, of which are a member. And, and we also are the exclusive for the Association of Towns, AOT. And we're about to get NISAC as, as, as well for all the counties. Again, it's a, your residents, all you're doing here is you're giving them another option. People, it's an opt-out program, not an opt-in program. That's the biggest stumbling block, but that's the way that the law is written. Public Service Commission, they adopted those laws from other states. That's the way it's run. It's a, it was a, it was an opt-in. You only get about five percent of the population. This is, you get, obviously you get, automatic they're in. Anybody who's already on a contract, I don't know that these people exist. I don't, it's completely illegal for me to slam people or, or, you know, completely illegal for them to break a contract. But at any time, they wanna come into the program or exit the program, we don't charge a fee at all. You know, anyone who is welcome or they can exit. I can't say because you're leaving, I'm charging ten dollars, you're, you're in. If you don't wanna, you just send us an email or we have to send you a, an opt-out card. They fill it out, they send it in. Or you, you just the eight hundred number. We try to get, make it as simple as possible. Couple of months ago, when we were going around Clinton County, these were, when we did the, the Chazy deal, you know, we had the NISAC number. So we, we had basically. So the Village of Champlain, population of eleven hundred, households four hundred and twenty-two in that area. So the annual savings would be roughly twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars. Traditionally, they're twenty-four month contracts. So you would have fifty thousand dollars really for doing nothing. This is, will be a stainless program. You know, any stainless program that's ever, ever done, that money wherever you, this would be ground zero within fifteen miles. That, that money will come through your barber shop, gas station, bar, wherever it might be. So you will maybe be able to recoup some of those tax dollars back in. This is a, been a, a very successful program throughout the state. It's new to the state. So, so people are sort of moving at it slowly. But there are people on the Western part of the state, Lackawanna's going forward. Buffalo is, is looking at it. Rochester's going forward. Pittsburgh's going forward. Syracuse, we can't do a deal right now because the rates are so low there right now. You can see the Syracuse territory, power there now is about two point three cents. So we're coming in at about three. So okay, can't do it. We're putting that on hold. Chazy got a, I believe they got about a fourteen to sixteen percent savings. Westchester County, they got about a fourteen percent savings. Also at Greene County, we have a bunch of programs actively working right now. They got about eight percent savings. Our job is to come back here. Obviously, we wanna make a splash. We wanna make you a customer. You know, we're not gonna do a deal if there is two or three percent savings. We don't find that to be risk. We're a very brand conscious company and AOT and NICOM are extremely brand conscious. So we have to run it legally by them and, you know, I'm trying to gather. I mean, energy right now is at insanely, insanely cheap right now. There is just an abundance and abundance and abundance of natural gases flooded the market, creating true electricity. And basically, how the program works is you have to pass a local law and, and then you, obviously that goes, gets a stamp by the Secretary of State. Secretary of State comes back, we get that. We then go to the utility, we then collect the data and we do a proposal. The proposal works. You move forward and make us, we are administrator of, of, there's three of us in the state. So we administer the entire program. And then we come back with you and then we sort of explain to you how the process is gonna get launched. You know, obviously there's a lot of marketing dollars. We pay a hundred percent of that. There's no money at, at the village hall. I mean, I might have to maybe do a couple hours with the village municipal attorney, but it's, it's really minimal. And then you move forward and your residents are saving money.
Other questions?
There's a lot to digest, I know. Again, we work a lot with different solar companies. You know, and, uh, no one's a hundred percent off the grid, you know, maybe at one point, hopefully in her lifetime, maybe. But, uh, you know, right now they're not, you know, there's really small percentages that can, they can go off the grid. And we're only, you know, if they're twenty percent solar or whatever is, is left over, it's just gonna be lowering that portion of the supply. Again, this does not affect the utility, utilities like this. I mean, the, the utility is just transportation and distribution of the power. It's not the supply. We're only going after the supply portion. That's a complete bastard to the customer. We've done this literally a thousand times. We have three hundred something, um, customers in Illinois, another hundred plus in Massachusetts, and a, you know, a hundred seven in New Jersey, actively in New York, probably have over twenty right now. And we're marketing this all throughout the state. And we're marketing this out throughout the state. But I can tell you, their neighbors are, are moving forward with this.
Yes, they are. I have their little flyer right here.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? Even though I'm from Elmhurst, you know. Okay, so if that, if, say, that comes in and you get cheaper rates for like Champlain, now will these customers still be able to benefit from an additional 5% off something like a program?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, 100%. Yeah.
Just because I know we go door-to-door and people are going to ask us questions.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, they, and...
Then it's a...
That's it.
We're expected to know it all. I'd just like to know as much as I can.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they, they 100% can do that.
Why does it have to be an opt-out program? I don't like it when people call me up and they tell me if I don't respond in 30 days, I'm automatically going to be billed.
It's the number-one question I'm asked, and I've given this presentation 300 times. That's the number-one question in it. And it's basically, again, going back to, if it was an opt-in program, like a magazine subscription thing, you're only going to get about 5% of the, of the population is going to answer that. And there's certain companies that you would never, ever be able to, they would never even pick up the phone. I mean, the average household is between 1,000 and 3,000 square feet. I'm buying power about 20 million square feet. They're not going to beat me. Like, so when, when we go, we, we go out and we, like, when you do these type of deals, like when I was saying before, like with, with the village, I can get 20 ESCOs to come in here and they're all bid on it. These deals are very, very large. And if you go back about 25 years ago, you know, you're, you know, the bad word of Enron. Like, you know, so now, if you could go fast forward, there are so many different laws for consumer protection laws. And basically, we go out, we hedge this power. We're going to put you in with, with Plattsburgh. We have to have three times the amount of money in the bank. So if we're going out and hedging $50 million, we have to have $150 million to hedge that. And there's only five companies, six companies that actually have that cash. So those companies, if they're Constellation, Talon, Direct, you know, they're, they're doing these large deals, they want to see that there is, there's a pot of gold there. They want to see that there, there's a population there. They want to see there's load there. They're not going to go after the onesie-twosie type deals. They're, they're not going to the party. They, they want to see that there, there's something there for them. So then that's why they, they sort of wrote these laws to sort of introduce these companies, like it's Calpine or one of these massive companies coming in. I, I understand.
I'm skeptical, I gotta tell you.
I understand. It's, it's a number-one question. People say like, I don't, but the, the whole thing is, I'm not forcing you to do anything.
No, but I have to opt out.
No, 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 no. I don't have a contract with you. If you want to, like, you have to think of, of energy. Energy, whatever you do in life, private businesses is already benefiting off of this heavily. Energy is between 15% to 20%, 20% of your operating cost in any business. Manufacturing, sometimes 50. Okay, so private companies and governments, they're doing this already. About 90% to 85% of, of companies, this is how they buy their power. It is literally 180 degrees when it comes down to residents. About 10% of the population do this. Residents don't do this. And now you're, you're saying, like, right now, it's like, you don't have a choice with NISAC. They, they give you a price and they, and you swallow that.
Yep.
You don't have a choice. Now I'm offering you a choice. I'm saying, you can do this on your own. You can call up one of these small ESCO companies, which, there's probably 200 registered ESCOs in the state of New York. I do this as a living. I would probably trust about 40 of them. The other ones, there's a lot of just set of business practices in that. There's, there's scandals.
Those are the ones I must have dealt with.
You know, like, and you're getting $50 gift cards.
I mean, it's like they were selling snake oil.
Yeah, and no one reads the fine print of the contract. And then three months later, your bill is triple.
Yeah.
So in these type of laws, you're, you're literally having the larger setting of companies in the United States come here and say, "Do you want this?" And again, I don't have a contract. So if you don't want to do it, you don't have to do it.
I support you.
Yeah.
Okay, so in New York State, because we have this New York sun legislation that's going forward, and all of the utility companies have to hit certain benchmarks by certain time frames as to how much energy is renewable energy in the state. Is that something that you also have to meet those benchmarks?
No, I mean, the current, currently, right now, the state of New York, the Public Service Commission, like, the ISO is 15% of it, it has to come from a green source. So it's hydro, solar, wind, whatever, like biogas, 15%. So right now, you, like, the Cuomo came out and he said, like, we're going to do, it's going to be 50/30. And then you're like, we, we can't do that. So 50% of the power coming into the ISO was, had to come, you know, by 2030. That's 11 years away. Like, that's not going to happen. It physically impossible. And he's decommissioning Indian Point. I mean, you have Fitzpatrick, and then you have Indian Point. So one of the new plans, that's 20% of the generation in the state. That's leaving the state. So that's not going to happen. So now he's sort of, we worked, there's a recent, 75% of the, of the power has come from, but it's 2050. I'm like, well, you're not going to be in office, so.
Yeah, you're right.
So it's, you know, those numbers are constantly changing. But currently, right now, the illumination, like, you know, everyone's getting off the ISO, so it's coming from a green source. You actually are buying green currently, right now. You know, we, when we do come in here, we will offer you the, the number I gave you. That was a traditional power price, but that's a, that's a hydrocarbon price. You know, we do offer, as you can see in that flyer, if people want to green up, they can do it. Going green is very cheap. If you want to go solar right now, probably the cheapest source of green power in the state right now is low hydro. That, that's cheap. But if you want to do nothing, you know, we, we are trying to offer it in multiple different ways.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? Something we'll discuss? Make a decision then?
Yeah.
You know, I'll, I'll reach.
I did bring donuts, so you guys, everyone's ahead of date, so you can take one. I'll leave that here. You guys decide.
I don't know.
All right, thanks, Ed.
I appreciate it.
Yes, really.
I appreciate everybody.
You have all this.
I have, I have, yes, I have all of this. If the board decides, I'll make sure you all have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll put it in the calendar.
Don't cool off. I'm dying. You're going to be dying.
It's really hot in here.
Yeah, it's warm. It is really hot in here. All right, well...
I'll be there.
Here we are.
Do our windows open? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a minute where I can pick your brain a little bit out there?
What'd you say?
Do you have a minute where?
Yeah, yeah, I got it. My flight's not till tomorrow.
All right, I think we're on section five. Enforcement, the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
Forgot what I wanted to say.
Oh, fire. How's that for the reminder?
No, I mean, I, I mean, I can sympathize with Diane. She does have a real nice fire pit there. But I just feel that the houses in the village are so close together. And then I bent the one after the other, after the other. I'm not burning garbage, but they sit there, and they're cooking a hot dog, and the next thing you know, the paper plate's in the fire pit, and then the neighbors complaining that they're smelling garbage. Now, this is all right from 8:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon, but midnight or so, I don't like those calls. I don't mind going out for the fire department when they call me. I've never refused. But I know the fire department is frustrated with these calls. Like JP said, the sheer amount of men and equipment that they have to roll because they don't know what the call is is the issue. And I know everybody likes to have a, "I can't fire" and all that, but I, I just, my feeling is that the village is not the place for it. So other than that, you have my report, all notices of violations or whatever the hell I did there this month. I mean, the ones with the fire pits, I did leave notices of violations. They don't open your door before 1:00 in the afternoon, I guess, so I just left them in the door. So the fires seem to have stopped at those places. But, you know, I can't guarantee that they're not going to come back. If you use the courts, it's very time-consuming. They go down to the, well, I talked to you, Tommy, about the courts and the different issues that we had and the results and what goes on. I mean, courts is not the answer.
Well, I beg to differ on that. I think courts need to be enforcing things.
Well, you're, you're probably right there, but unfortunately, I can't tell the judge what to do.
No, that's, that's a whole separate issue, but, but people are getting violations for a lot of other things besides burning pits. And if, if the court is not doing what they need to be doing, then that's something else that needs to be addressed.
If they're, if they're letting them off with the warning that they need to stop doing what they're doing.
And it continues.
And it continues, and we just need to re-site them again.
Keep sending them back to court.
Put them back in there again with an additional charge and a charge on the first one because they didn't comply. And it's the only thing we can do, though.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. And I mean, I'll use the courts, but it's, it's a no-win situation. I'm, I'm frustrated with it, you know? I mean, at least we cut grass after they cut it once or twice. It dries out around here and it doesn't grow anymore. These damn fires, every weekend, there's a fire.
It's being so dry. It's getting higher and higher.
Well, I mean, I went to one, like she said, 15 away from a, you know, a building with vinyl siding. And, you know, and they're not smart enough to realize that they're going to burn their house down and the neighbor's house down.
Any other questions for Mike? He's been busy. Thank you.
Oh, I do have something in the new business room. We get to that.
Okay, all right. We'll put it in the new business.
Yeah, I'll be calm by then.
All right. Here's the report from the mayor. Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Champlain Board Meeting. As many of you know, and has been discussed tonight, we've been working to keep our village safe for all residents as well as build ties between us to strengthen our community. We continue to coordinate with law enforcement to address theft, vandalism, noise, and damage to properties. The draft of the curfew law, which is with our lawyer, will be back soon for our review, and then a public hearing will be scheduled. This date will be shared in the newspaper and on our webpage. Several people have discussed the lack of activities for teens in the village. This is a genuine concern. Currently, we have horseshoe pits, disc golf, longboat rowing, and the rac trail. We welcome input from our residents regarding other opportunities that we might be able to organize. In the past, we have had a teen liaison to the board who attends meetings and serves as a voice for their peers. If anyone is interested in this position, please contact the office. There are many events scheduled this summer. We've already had two concerts. This Saturday, August 10th, from noon until 3:00, we will have our annual ice cream social in Bill Earl Park on River Street in conjunction with the Champlain Telephone Company's celebration. The Champlain, the Samuel D. Champlain History Center will also be open. If you haven't had a chance to visit this gem, please do. On Sunday, August 11th, we will again have porch music with Marilyn Reynolds performing on the Garrick porch. Yes?
Well, you can use my...
That's all I want is your porch. And, and your chairs.
They'll be there.
Thank you.
And clean.
Thank you, Amy. I meant to say that before I got to that sentence. Performing on the Garrick porch on Chestnut Street at 1:00 PM. And Ryan Casey performing on John Rose porch on Oak Street at 1:45. Our final concert of the season will be on Sunday, August 18th at 5:30 with Bear Tracks. All events are free. Please bring a chair. The DPW crew with Mike Jolker has been working diligently to prepare streets for paving, which will happen in early September, and they have also been repairing sidewalks. Waterline flushing will take place in the next few weeks. When you see them on the streets, say thanks for their hard work. I continue to look for funding for wastewater plant upgrades and waterline replacements. Thanks to Mary and Juanita for their assistance in pursuing these monies. May you all enjoy the last month of summer. Thank you for your support and your suggestions to make our village a good place to live. Thank you. Report from the trustees. Amy?
So the RFA that I applied for, we did not get. They had hundreds of applicants, and it was very few that were, were chosen. So they said they would let us know of any other opportunities that may come across their way for us. But I'll continue to apply for whatever you send my way.
Sure, thank you.
I didn't, in all honesty, think we had a chance based on the huge choices to choose from. And because we cater to such a small quantity of people, the effect would not be as what they were looking for. And since they had so many people apply, our chances when people don't see it, they don't apply, you know? But, you know, we won't give up. We just keep trying. It can hurt.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tom?
Okay. Bring you up to date on the IMA committee. We, let's see, at last meeting, we discussed the current draft. And Kim and I attended the forum meeting in Champlain and came up with an agreed path that night. And then again with the committee, before analyzing the document, made some changes. Some conceded to, some again. But what with the lawyers, and now it has come back from their attorney. And the primary, why I want to talk to you about it, instead of trying to handle this alone, what I'm showing, what I've made copies for you is of all the track changes that were made this past couple of years. The blue was, anything in blue is changes that I made today. And it represented our last meeting. We had agreed on making these changes. Some of it redundant wording. One of them was removing the attachment, the addendum, I think it was addendum C, I believe, which was the town's EDU code, not a policy, but a code. And, and they agreed to take it out because we didn't want it in there because we don't, I don't want this document to have to get opened up every time we want to make a revision to what should be a policy. So that's why we've got our policy on the agenda tonight to approve. I want to reference the policies and not have them attached. The one that I want to talk about, and I need your feedback, your input, your guidance on it, is if you go to section B, water supply and water charges, they added in red that the water board will set rates in proportion to the present rates of 525 for the Village of Champlain and 722 for the Town of Champlain, not to exceed 37.5%, which is that present proportional difference. What they're asking is we cap it where we're, cap that difference where we're at. So essentially, if we ever raise the village rates, you know, to $10, it would be 37.5%. They could not be more than 37.5% higher than that for the town. Or, in other words, 1375. I, in the, in the meeting with the, with the committee, I was unsure where to go with that. Part of me said we could swallow it. Part of me says I don't want to set a cap. I don't know what this business will be like 20 years from now. I can't predict the future. And that's what, that's what scared me about putting these numbers in there.
And if you don't mind my adding, Tom, that our lawyer said he was very angry about that.
I'm not agreeing. Yeah, so I mean, that's to sum up how I felt. I guess "lurid" is a good word. Again, like I said, I think on today's standards, I think that's fine, but I don't know about tomorrow's. So the question is, do we just not accept that? Push back entirely on putting any type of a cap? Or do we increase the cap to where we know we are going to live underneath it? You know, what would your opinions be? Because, like, Kim and I, we need that feedback to move forward at our next meeting.
Well, it's kind of ludicrous to put caps on, period, whether we make it big enough or not. I mean, you can't predict.
No.
And all of us worked diligently to, to provide the lowest possible rates. None of us... And all of us worked diligently to, to provide the lowest possible rates. None of us are looking to make money. It's not us that's jacking up the price to their customers. So, you know, to put something like that in contract, I, uh, I, I, I'm not comfortable with it. And I see that they're, they're moving out their repayment to us again, even further.
No, no.
Yes, because they were supposed to make the first payment at the end of July, the one that we had last month.
They did.
Did they make it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so this.
So I saw here by the end of December and then the next one, so that's what I was assuming. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll read through any of this, but those two sections.
No, I think what you're reading is the wording for the O and M payments they wanna make in July and December. It was written in the second quarter, end of year. They put specific dates we can find with.
That's fine, yeah.
And then if you go to the very last, which is section E, I added the words passed due today to the operation of name is, because it's a separate section, I wanted to clarify that. As you can see, we lined out the first sentence because they did make that payment. There is no more O for 2018.
Right.
So, for the thirty thousand O will be done December and March. So, I mean, if, I'm fine with it. All the changes that were made, all this, they were all pretty, pretty minor, except for putting that extra addendum in, which I did not want. I just don't. We gotta deal with the, with the water, water charges. I'm not sure how to go forward with it.
Well, I agree with Amy.
Well, I don't disagree.
Why are they, why are they set on setting a cap? I mean, what is their thought behind this?
It's protection for them.
Protection that their, their water rates will never be extreme compared to ours.
That's, it's, there's no other way to say it.
No other way to say it.
Protection for them.
The water board will recommend the rates, but the water board is three villages, two towns. They feel like the recommendation may come higher on the town. This would hold it down.
I think they, you know, they need to put more trust that the water board is gonna do
Right.
a diligent job for both rates to try to keep them down, but they are.
Because we're all part of the town, too. I mean, that's what I don't get. I mean, why would we do something to hurt ourselves?
Well, the, I mean, the water rates just fall in District Six, however, so.
Right, but when you do those rates, those are our businesses, these are people within our community. We wanna keep here. Why would we go jackin' up their prices to push people out? We're trying to keep people here. We wouldn't do that. And there's no guarantee with the next board or whoever that they would, they would. But, you know, to put in this, this cap is crazy.
Well, that's why we.
Because we don't know what we don't know.
Well, like I said.
We can't set ourselves up either.
I know, that's, that's what I told them.
That's why it's being brought up tonight.
That's why it's being brought up. That's what I told them. My words to them were, I could probably swallow that today, and I think we could, we'd find living within it, but I don't know about the future.
Right.
I can't predict the future. I'm not sure what would change to, to cause anything to ever be more of a gap in that. I don't think it would ever happen. I just am uncomfortable putting
I don't know, we've never jacked up our rate to the outside users at all. We've been very accommodating in every, every way. That's why there's no, nothing historically that shows that we're vindictive and vicious in putting on ridiculous rates. So why all of a sudden are, are they so? I, I just don't get it, frankly.
I can't answer that. I don't know.
So is the board's feeling that we take out the?
Sounds like our recommendation is that there be no caps, no problem.
Our increases are usually made across, like, the same percentage.
And, you know, once this water board gets to work and we scrutinize everything, maybe their percentage could be lower than some. I don't know. I can't predict it.
Thank you guys for doing this.
Yeah, thanks.
Patience of saints.
Yeah.
So I am.
A lot of dedication. Is there anything else, Tom?
No, there's none. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Champlain Kids Connected has held four of this summer's fun runs. We have one left, which will be August eighteenth at four o'clock at the playground with the picnic. All the participants who ran or will run four of the five runs earn a T-shirt. And we have a very, very nice community mom who buys medals for the kids every year. So she's already ordered those and those are on their way. So each kid participating will earn a medal. We've also had a wonderful turnout for our summer camp series. We've had seven so far. But the most I've had, almost twenty-five kids. The least I've probably had about eight. So it's still a good turnout, no matter what goes on. Swimming, the swimming sessions have kinda interfered a little bit, but everything is good. We have three sessions left, this Wednesday, next Monday, and Wednesday will be our last one, which I set up with the museum to go visit during that time also. So some of our kids will be able to go there if they have never been or can't go during Village Fest. I'll also have some arts and crafts and some games set up at the Village Fest. So kids, families are all welcome to come down and enjoy that. And we are in works with two more cooking classes that are planned for this year. So that'll finish up our year along with the Christmas activities.
Thanks for all you do. The kids are so adorable. If you, if you're ever available to come to some of the fun runs, you really should because they're just absolutely precious. And they're so excited about, yeah, the, the three-year-olds are running down the street. And they're so excited to see improvement on their times.
Oh, yeah, there was so many last night. There was so many that beat their time.
Yeah, it's really, it is awesome. It's just really sweet. It's nice. Yeah, thanks for all you do. Kim?
Okay, so now we can announce it. Finally. So, back in June, I received an email from Community Challenge AARP that we have decided to increase our grant pool and are excited to tell you that the Village of Champlain will receive a grant of six thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars through the 2019 AARP Community Challenge. This was a competitive national challenge and your project stood out. We are delighted to select your proposal and look forward to working with you. We should be receiving funds end of July, beginning of August. If you haven't notified me that we got a check yet, then I'm gonna guess it's gonna be further into August.
It's gonna go to deposit because I did see something.
Oh, that's right, in the paperwork.
I did see something that came in AARP, but it was a zero amount.
Okay, so, the, so it was bad news. The doc, doctors that we received the quote from gave us a quote on a residential system that they say will not work with us because of the river. I happened to look at one very quickly before I came here, and that was nineteen thousand eight hundred and something dollars. And I'm like, whoa, 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 no. So I'm gonna call, um, Chris at the doc doctors and say, okay, we're a river. What can we do? And we need to keep the cost down. Because I really would like to just use the grant money, get everything that we need, and not have to have anything out of pocket, if at all possible.
Could you see if he's willing to come over and meet us at the river?
Okay.
So we can talk about options. I think they're thinking we have this raging river or something.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean,
He Googled it.
What I don't understand is
I know, but still, let's see it.
Why, why, Amy, you've applied for this before. We did it.
I'm the one originally who had the information. We like.
So, yeah, I mean, he has to realize everything's coming from the Village of Champlain. He had to have realized, or they, whoever was reviewing it, had to have realized that it was a municipality, not a residence. So, more news to follow on that. Because the cost of, of the residential one with everything other than the tracking system was five thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, which we, the tracking system, I think, was another five hundred and something. So we would have had plenty of money for this. So, we'll see what, see what it comes back with. So, that's our good news. I always asked the, the community liaison again with the health department, so I just gave Juanita the paperwork tonight to do that again. Unfortunately, Ciara is leaving to go to DSS, so the last email I got from her said goodbye. So, we'll see who we'll be working with in the future, but she just wait to work with.
Yeah. And I will mention that we did get three sun, uh, screen dispensers.
Yes, we saw them in the, in the other night.
And one is already at the rec trail and the other two will be installed. They're on post right now, but we need to make them a little more secure.
Yeah.
All right. Report from the court treasurer?
Everyone has their expense and revenue reports for July. And there are additional invoices. We have additional invoices for the warrant of six thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-three cents for a total warrant of twenty thousand six hundred and seventy-four sixty-four.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to pay the the warrant with additional invoices as well for forty thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
Is there a second? Discussion? Questions?
We, do we have something redone with our webpage?
We did, and I would encourage you to look at it. It's totally been updated. It's bright. Erin Sorrell did a fantastic job. She put in a slideshow of photographs. The tabs are, it's easy to use. It's very friendly. I, I think it turned out beautifully.
Cool.
See, I have a section for the Facebook page post, so that comes up too, so you can just scroll right on that website to see any posts that have been put up.
And I have Facebook? See, I have an avenue.
I'm still going to help you, but, yeah.
That day will come.
It looks really, really, she did a super job on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going to change out the photographs on the, on the slideshow seasonally.
Nice. Certainly have enough to put out there.
Any other questions, Juanita?
No, that's all I have.
Roll call?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Report from the superintendent. Mike, uh, Mike left us a long list. They've been super busy. I think I need to read that aloud, but if you have any questions, I can answer some, some things.
Do you know the status of the backhoe?
The status of the backhoe is that it's still at the garage.
At the shop, okay.
Yeah, the shop.
It just went up once. We.
Yeah, it just came out.
Right, right.
I think it was taken in on
Thursday?
Thursday. It was Thursday, and then maybe it went on Friday morning. If you, if you have not walked along the rec trail to see the improvement where Cherry Street comes into the rec trail, you should do that. Not only is all the garbage gone, but we now have access to the rec trail, so we can do the repairs and the mowing that's necessary. And there's a turnaround at Cherry Street for plowing.
And a wider street.
And a wider street, and a street that I, that hasn't had attention in decades.
How'd that happen?
What happened?
How, how were we able to widen the?
A lot of it had just encroached.
Yeah, it just had its tugs.
Grown in, and then the, the homeowner up there, lots of trees to be taken out so that the turnaround, because it's only going to benefit everybody out there. So, it was a lot of work, but it looks really good. And as I mentioned in my report, the paving now is supposed to be here in early September. When they come up to Dross's Point, they'll do the Village of Champlain then. So it does give us a little more time to get things done.
So is Mike feeling with this added staff that they're getting caught up a little, or at least being able to breathe?
I think so. I think so, yeah. It's very helpful. All right, any other questions on the superintendent's report?
Are we gonna be talking about these requests later or is it on here?
Oh, we should talk about these requests and, yeah, we, yeah, we should talk about them. In particular, I know that the, um, well, I'm sure they're all important, but Woody also wanted me to mention how important that chatterbox, that autodiler for the Main Street Loop Station is. Um, I don't know, you wanna just go?
Do you wanna go one, two, three?
Yeah, let's go one, two, three. So the first one is a quote for a strobe light on the two, uh, twenty sixteen Ford truck, which is on a warranty.
Can't just replace one light, you have to replace the whole unit?
Yeah, isn't that nice?
Of course.
Yeah, that's normal.
Do you have a purge go out after three years?
I don't know.
What year is that, Tom?
Twenty sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll trade your friend.
Yeah, that's okay.
I was reading all up here.
You have a lot on your mind.
Water.
I have, I've got water in my brain already.
Can we just do a motion to approve this?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this quote to replace the strobe light in their grid light, the unit.
Second. Any other discussion?
A total of four hundred eighty-five dollars.
Any other discussion? All right. That has to be a roll call, right?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Number two is the autodiler for the Main Street Loop Station. Uh, we had a, we had a power outage last week down there, some kind of transformer, and the chatterbox doesn't work. And so, no one was notified, and this is super important that we get this taken care of.
I take that, by the size of this quote, we only have the one, because it's the only.
You know, he was supposed to get another quote on the autodiler. That's what he says.
But I would.
We can approve the amount up to twenty-five, twenty-five, but he has another quote coming.
Yeah, that's the other one.
Yeah.
I would say this is an emergency to.
It is an emergency, but we can, we can approve this up to this amount, and then if the other quote comes in lower, that's fine.
What would that come out of?
Yeah, make a motion to approve this purchase up to twenty-five hundred, twenty-five dollars and twenty-four cents towards forty auto dollars. Yeah.
Two, one and L code.
Please.
G eighty-one thirty point two sewage treatment disposal equipment.
There is second?
Second.
Other discussion? I take that as no other discussion. All right, roll call.
Trustee Trombley. Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
And number three is the battery backup for the water plant. For a hundred sixty-four ninety-nine.
Again, make a motion to purchase. this battery backup for the water plant, a hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? No discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Uh, correspondence?
Um, correspondence from New York's, New York State. Oh, to Assemblyman Billy Jones regarding extreme winter recovery funds. Correspondence from New York State DOT regarding extreme winter recovery funds. Correspondence from New York State DOT regarding funding. Letter from Mayor McCutcheon to Assemblyman Billy Jones regarding water line replacement. Um, second quarter sales tax revenue from Clinton County. JC monthly report. Correspondence from Michael Vendett out of fifty-nine Oak Street. And correspondence from Ken Delfranch.
Any discussion or questions on any of the correspondence?
Are we addressing this last one from Mr. Vendett?
Right now.
Are we tablebing the second?
Right now, um.
Is the second left?
Okay.
Yeah, Mary can explain where we are in this right now.
Yeah, there was a, a water, there was a water leak somewhere, but we don't know what it was. He's, he's, he's not there. He's hardly ever there and he usually has zero to a thousand per quarter. And this one ended up being forty-five thousand gallons that went through. Mike did the meter reading and it showed during his two week period that when he wasn't there, there was two hundred and forty, a hundred and seventy gallons an hour going through it. Mike think, he says every time he leaves, he turns off the water, his water source, so this doesn't happen. Can only guess he didn't do it that one time and some of the rain was running or leaking and when he got back, he didn't end up turning it off. Maybe he was just turning it off and leaving and actually stopping it. So Mike's going to try to go in. Next time he comes around, Mr. Vendett is around to go in. And after he turns the water on for his own purposes to see what happens, if there's anything that happens, but otherwise we really don't have any evidence as to where the water went.
Yeah. Unfortunately it doesn't.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't fit into our policy, but if he does have something that's not working, well, he needs to run it.
Definitely much now. They're just redoing that house.
Mm-hmm.
The old cobble house.
Mm-hmm.
The big the brick house.
Yeah.
Half an inch to the end, yeah.
Yeah, a notch and a bit, yeah.
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 Alright. Uh, let's see, this is, just a, a little update on the hometown tarot banners. Um, those are the banners that, um, hang in many municipalities now with the veterans. I asked, um, Melody Trombley and Diane Morelli to be on a committee together with me to find out more about the programs and other, specifically the town of Plattsburgh and the town of Osable. I talked to Melody today and she did get a lot of information about it and she's in the process of setting up the application form and doing all the other things that we would have to do to offer this to the families of veterans from the village. We are concentrating on the Village of Champlain, but I think the bigger picture is to expand it into the town if the town wants it. Um, Melody actually lives in the town. The families bear the cost and we would hang the flags from Memorial Day to approximately Veterans Day. So they would, they would line probably Main Street and maybe Church Street or some of the other streets depending on how many they get. I do know we have a lot of, a lot of veterans, probably for decades at the village. So there's been a lot of interest in being able to honor them. Any questions? I don't know if you've been in Osable for recently, but it's almost emotional because there are so many there.
Willesboro has it too, so, um, just the impact on the residents that live in the facility there is staggering, you know, and every community that these are in, you know, my residents will say to me, have you seen my picture? And it's just so awesome to go see and have that conversation with them and how proud they are and, you know, I think that we should go above and beyond for families who can't afford it is to get that out there and kind funding uh, for that. Uh, this is something I've been wanting to pursue, but my life is just too insane. But I had gathered information on this from Willesboro when it first came up just because of that initial impact and now seeing it in the other communities and it is just powerful.
I've seen it, I've seen it.
Incredibly powerful.
I've seen it throughout when I was working first step in communities from here to Albany, so I too wanted to bring that up and we could pursue it and ask somebody.
So it's on, yeah, so it's on its way and, and our goal is to, um, be able to put them up in May, this May, this, of twenty twenty and have them up for the next few months and I think that will be a reality.
Awesome.
The municipal energy program that Ed presented, um, I don't know what your feelings are on that, if you want to read more information, if you feel we want to make a decision, um, I don't know.
Well, I would like to read more if you have more to offer to us.
I do, I do.
Just because, you know, you get presented all the good stuff, but maybe there's something, and that, we don't want to get stuck anywhere, but it sounds like a win-win.
Yeah.
Um, and then to top on the extra five percent when nice egg is just killer for us.
Yeah.
How's that? Is that politically correct?
It is what it is.
It is what it is!
Well, let me, uh, make copies of what I have and I'll put them in your boxes and you can look it over and then next month we can make a decision. Uh, contamination cleanup, uh, all I can say is they did come last, well, you can see the parking lot's paved. Uh, you probably saw on our bills paved that we, um, are getting the striping done for the parking lot. We had it compared to parking perpendicular like we do now or to try to have it coming in from the sides. It was, uh, it was a wash.
A wash, yeah.
So, um, we're going to continue the way that, that we have now. Um, and that will be done. When will that be done, Juanita, do you think?
She's gonna call, because they're, they're actually redoing the McDonald's parking lot as well. So.
When you combine two, two at the same time, do you?
They'll, they'll probably.
Do they?
They just did it.
I don't know.
They used washable paint? Don't know.
It will be done though. It will be done here. So the, uh, um, the contamination crew did come last Thursday and, um, they did some pilot testing of the, uh, of the equipment and they're going to be back for the construction of that structure on the side of the building. Um, sometime next week they'll be starting that. So that process is moving along.
Okay.
Um, we already spoke about the water project negotiations. The Willow Street lot that mess up there, I don't know if you've been up there recently. It's very slowly getting cleaned up. It looks much better. It's not done yet, but topsoil is being brought in and then there'll be some hydro seeding. I believe there's also a culvert back on the rail bed that still has to be done, but it is progressing slowly. It is better though. The fund balance policy, um, that Amy put, Amy and Kim put together. I think we asked her to look that over and come with some recommendations or did anyone have time to do that?
I think it's perfect.
I have, I, I have no other things to add to it. I mean, other than, you know, I know we have to have one, but I don't know. Did anyone have any recommendations or suggestions or questions on wording?
It's kind of straightforward.
It's pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's reliable. Well, in that case, I would, I would ask for a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept the new fund balance for Village Champlain?
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Any other discussion? Okay, making it easy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And that is all I have under all the business.
Did you touch on the NIMR requirement?
Oh, Mike, do you want to talk about the, uh?
Yes. We also, we want to get all the people.
Oh, I forgot that.
Right.
Yeah, so two, two other short things. Thank you for your patience.
And what's happening with, um, our attorney and looking at this curfew that was supposed to be done?
It's there and he's on vacation this week.
Like you said, a phone call.
No, he, no, he hasn't. No.
We brought this up last.
Yes, and I wrote, it took me a couple of weeks to write it.
Yeah, but he's only had it for.
I'm slow. I'm a slow learner.
Man.
And then, uh.
Well, our board meeting was a week early as well.
Yes. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. I'm here for you, Jen.
A little, little tact.
I'm here for you.
Thanks, I'm glad someone has a good tact. Oh, did I skip that?
Yeah, he's gonna touch on that.
Oh, yeah, I am going to. Let me do that first because I skipped it, number two. It's what happens when I don't put my readers on. The NIMR requirements, um, I mentioned them at the last meeting, but in particular, we are getting bids for the bark chips or the mulch at the playground. That's essential. So we have asked three companies to give us quotes on getting that underneath the play equipment. And then also the two signs that are required. We also are ordering those.
Well, what did they say about it being in the flood zone?
It doesn't matter if it's bark. It can't be rubber.
Okay.
It can't be stuff that would contaminate.
So we spent thousands of dollars putting down bark and the flood takes it down the river.
Yes.
Yeah, and we may have to put it back. It's a risk.
Yes.
But it's also requiring.
I, I don't, I don't like it, but it's a requirement.
I think, I think it outweighs the liability though. Plus you don't want somebody hurt to begin with, but.
I do too. Right. I know, I don't particularly like it either, but the liability scares me, so we really have to do it. We'll see how the quotes come in. We've only had one so far.
Did you get Mike's number?
Yes, and he's been contacted.
Yes, he's going to be here this week. He was on traveling last, when I called him last week.
Thank you for pointing that out, but I skipped that. Okay.
Okay, in front of you, the, the big map is the site plan of the proposed fire station. And the little one is a GIS map from the county. What we discovered in the site plan is if you, that yellow line that you see on there is the current property line which is owned by the village. Apparently years ago Route eleven must have had a the gully used to come through there, so I'm assuming the road went around the gully. And over time, the gully was filled, but the road was never made straight. If you look at the, the colored map, you can see the red line and the property lines. It's all straight down Elm Street except by the fire station where the gully was. What the, what the commissioners are asking for is, is it possible that we could get that from the village? That would allow us to move our storm ponds down closer, which would allow for more parking. So, I got the site plans and I got the maps and started bringing it up tonight so you could take a look at it. I mean, this would all have to be done through a lot line adjustments and legal and all this and that, which the fire district would assume the cost on. Wouldn't cost the village anything.
And would I have to go in front of the planning board and all that?
Um, it may or may not. I'm not, I have to talk to Tom yet about it, but you know, I just wanted to bring it up here first.
And so they would like have the red and white line go along the curving, I take it?
Well, it would be straight, basically.
It's actually above the curve.
Yes, the, the white path is, is inside the village is right away. It was, it would remain like that.
Okay.
It's funny how that, how that happened.
Well, we didn't realize it until we had the, the survey done and it came out the site plan and I'm looking at it and, you know, what are these lines? So, then we started looking at it and that, years ago, there was the gully that came down through there. So the road must have been, you know, pushed to the side so you can get around the gully.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So essentially all, all we'd be doing is approving these borders to be straightened down on these documents.
Yes, yeah. Lot line adjustment.
I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I'm fine with it.
I, I have no problem with it.
I can't think of any reason why we shouldn't.
No.
And speaking of the, the fire station, just to give you a little bit of an update since we had the vote, we're in the design phase of it. Um, this is part of it. Initially, when we had the vote, we were anticipating up to a fifty thousand dollar grant from the USDA. Well, we signed papers last week. They gave us two hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Sweet!
So that's gonna go towards the impact of what the fire tax would be. So I, I, I couldn't believe it. Apparently they had other projects that fell out or fell away and this is the end of their budget. So they gotta use it or lose it, so they put it all in this project.
Sweet!
Yeah, I mean, from fifty thousand to two seventy-nine, that doesn't happen every day.
Yeah.
Other than that, we're still hoping to have the design ready by the end of the year and go out to bid in December, January for springtime construction. We don't want to miss that window because if you go out later, the contractors have already got their work and the price escalates.
The price keeps going up.
Yeah, so. That's about it with the fire station.
So it sounds like the board really doesn't have a problem with, uh, straightening out that line.
So I'll go ahead.
All the red lines could be that easy to straighten out.
I know.
They're wacky. Yeah, mine's like this puzzle piece.
I mean, I haven't talked to Tom yet, but I'm sure there's a process for this and he'll, he'll ask me what we need to do, so. I'll keep you informed as we go forward.
Alright, thank you. Tom, back to you, that EDU policy? Do you want to, uh, explain the importance of that?
Of making, of, of having the policy?
Well, of having and adopting the policy.
Yeah, the importance of adopting the policy is that we have a standard to follow going forward. You know, I did the work this time. They've actually got a section here where they're recommending that each entity assigns a what do you call it? Can, what was the word you used?
It was a applicator?
Assessor, was it?
Yes, a water assessor.
An EDU assessor, I think it was, which I'm fine with. It just means one of us is going to have to work, which is essentially going to happen anyway. Now, every year, we just need to have this policy to follow to ensure that we're on the ready-to-use count, provide it to the water board. So they can do their necessary calculations. Uh, the reason I asked to have it added to the agenda tonight is so we could have a policy number to reference in the IMA if we keep this moving forward.
So could I have a motion to, uh, to accept this EDU policy?
I should have made copies of it from four and five.
I have mine, I think.
Oh, the, the breakdown. No, I don't have it with me, but yes.
Essentially is assigning a conversion unit.
Yeah, yeah, it's how it's assigned and broken down.
Is the town gonna have the same policy?
Yeah, they currently do and it's under a code.
Yeah, but it's not the same as what yours is.
No, they made changes.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yes, they, they followed this and they tried to standardize as much as they could, but you do have businesses that are different.
Right.
It's not completely standardized.
Okay, but they're gonna be compatible though. I, that was, when they were talking about, I was wondering how one could be here, one could be there.
And I highly suggested to the, to the two members on the team that they take it out of a code and put it into a policy so it can be revised
Yes.
as time goes on because a new business is going to come in, it's not going to fit, we're going to have to add it.
Right now theirs is a code.
And it covers.
It's a local law and.
It's expensive. It's expensive.
That's expensive.
Should have never happened, but it did.
Yep, so they were in agreement with that, so I'm assuming that they're going to go forward in that direction.
So is there a motion to accept this as our policy?
I need a motion.
Second, please. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I know, I knew that you were suggesting. Nobody's, nobody's jumping there.
Yeah, I, I think it's very well done. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and thanks for your work on this. I know that was a tremendous amount of work.
So Mary, can you give me a, a reference number for that at some point? Will it have a number attached to it, or?
A policy? Hmm, it don't really have a nu- number, no.
Okay.
We can create one.
Or...
Yeah.
Just a title for it.
Or, or I just use, use the title and call it person one.
The date on that.
Um, that's not, I would vote with the date.
Policy.
Sure, sure, we'll issue a document.
Yeah, and then if you review it, they might, you know, like we do to our policies, the personnel policies.
Okay.
Okay, I'll just reference it by titles.
Okay. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you all. Sorry, it was marathon, but...